And there we go.
Thank you very much, Sandy. Welcome, everybody to the meeting. I just want to, first of all, remind everybody that we are being recorded during this meeting, and it will serve as our record as well. We will be coming out of executive session at 7:41. So again, we welcome everyone who's here and tuning in to hear what's going on. And at this particular time, I would like to ask everybody to please rise if they're able to for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We do have, we do have an announcement to make with regard to a moment of silence. We do have a graduate, but this particular graduate is kind of unique because his wife was served on our school board. She was a graduate and, and she was also one of our school board presidents. I am said to announce this. It was not COVID related. I do want to say that in advance. He lived a good, long life. Seymour Rosenheck passed away recently, and his, his daughter and his grandson, both graduates of Monticello Central School District as well. His wife Jean served many years on the school board and for many years as its board president. Jean graduated in 1944. He lettered in baseball and basketball, and ironically, he was one of Coach Somerville's favorite people. And Coach Somerville, for those of you who remember him, he didn't have a lot of favorite people. So it's kind of nice to know that he did that, or that he was that way. The one thing about Seymour is he was a staunch Panther, once a Panther, always a Panther. He supported all the programs right up into, into his, his ending breath. And I recall when, when I, when he would hear things about budget votes not possibly passing, or people not wanting to, to vote for the budgets, he would say, "What is it? People don't understand that kids matter." He always, and he had that gruff voice to say it with, "What is it that people don't understand? Kids matter." And Jean used to say that all the time. And he was a wonderful soul, and he will be missed. Our thoughts go out to Sari and Alec on their loss, especially during these difficult times. And I'd like to just ask everyone to please reflect in honor of Seymour and the life well-lived. Thank you very much. I'd like to remind everybody, except for your computers, please silence your electronic devices. I'll entertain a motion to move the agenda to the table made by Mr. Groden, seconded by Ms. Sharoff. Any discussion? All in favor? I need to see hands, guys. Any opposed? So ordered. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda, Dr. Silver? You're muted, Dr. Silver.
Who knows these things?
So are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Am I unmuted now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I have two additions. U7, approval resolved upon the recommendation, Superintendent Schools, that the Board of Education approve the agreement between the towns of Bethel, Town of Forestburg, County of Sullivan, and Monticello Central School District with George Sensui, Sensuci P E L C, to conduct a preliminary appraisal regarding the tax appeal filed by Eagle Creek Iderbauer, and authorized William Silver to sign the agreement on behalf of the Board. The Board also retains Bound Law PC to represent the district in this matter. And then U8 is a placeholder. The Board needs to set a budget hearing date. When Lisa's turn on the agenda, she'll recommend a date to you, and we'll fill in the blank.
Okay, thank you very much. Adoption of the agenda as amended, made by Mr. Groden, seconded by Ms. Galligan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So ordered. Approval of minutes of April 2nd, 2020. Entertained a motion made by Mrs. Vannett and seconded by Ms. Galligan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So ordered. Moving on from there, approval of minutes of April 21st, 2020. Entertained a motion made by Ms. Jersey, seconded by Mr. Groden. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So ordered. Before we go to the student board member update, I know that Mrs. Darty is usually with us via phone. She is unable to make this evening's meeting due to some personal matters regarding her mom. So she's not with us this evening, and our thoughts are with her. Student Board Member Update. So Sydney, we're so glad you're back with us. Tell us what's going on.
So we've basically been doing the same thing. Students have been working really hard, and we're very grateful because our teachers are doing whatever they can to accommodate us and make sure that everything's working. And also, a special thank you from the seniors to Mr. Wilder, because we know that he's been putting in so much effort with graduation and all the plans. And he also put a little segment on the website for us, updating us on all of the events that are going on and what to expect. So yeah, that's about it.
Terrific. I did tell you the last time we met that there was something in the works, and we're not kidding. So we're very excited because we want to be able to honor our graduating seniors, as well as those who are hitting those milestones in those other years as well. Mrs. Sharoff, you have a question for Sydney?
Just generally, can you give us an idea of how your, and your friends are holding up?
Yeah, so you know, we're doing our best. It's difficult because working from home isn't easy, but we're all supporting each other, and the teachers are being so helpful. We're so grateful for them. We have the best teachers here at Monticello. And yeah, so we've been pulling through.
Once a Panther, always a Panther. No doubt about it. So any other questions for Sydney? Going around the room? Thank you so much, Sydney. We're so glad you're doing well. Again, our love to all, all of your classmates, all of the little Panthers as well, because I know you communicate there. And we're so grateful that you're on our board. Moving on from there, we have a girls' basketball All-Stars. So we had some really interesting things. 2019, 2020, Sullivan County Democrat Girls Basketball All-Stars from Monticello are Leah Mato. I hope I'm pronouncing her name correctly. Sydney, you'll correct me if I'm incorrect, please. And Desiree Williams. And you see, I did it right, because I knew Desiree, that's why. So we congratulate them. We know that they are watching. And so the Board just wanted to make sure that we were able to recognize you, because we can't normally do it. So congratulations. You guys certainly earned it. You had stellar years. And also, Sullivan County Girls Basketball Coach of the Year is Ryan Jasper, and we believe he's also on the line with regard to that. And we congratulate Ryan. We have great coaches. We have great kids. Thank you so much. We have great teachers. So congratulations. Moving on from there, we have a presentation by Sandy Wagner, who's our, the Director of our Technology. But before he goes, I know that a lot of the background work that Sandy's been doing, especially for the Board, but certainly across the Board. Sandy, you came new to us mid-year, and we are so grateful you were here through us to help us through this pandemic. You have been amazing. I've heard some great reviews from the staff and faculty that have reached out to let me know that you've helped them on whatever they need. And I've heard the same from parents. So we thank you for all of your efforts, and I turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. I have a great team working behind me to make all of that happen as well. So I'm gonna make sure that I share this presentation properly first, and that you can all see, see the PowerPoint correctly. Am I correct?
Yes, we can see it.
All right. So, so I'm here tonight really just to tell you how the IT Department has handled the situation, what our current status is. Obviously, this is a big change for, for us in terms of how things were designed to work in Monticello. It's definitely presented a, a challenge for us. And with me coming in, you know, in the middle of the school year, to face this very quickly, it's been a challenge, and in some ways, an exciting one. We immediately, upon realizing students were going to be out for an extended time, shifted to get as many devices out to our students as we could, because we knew we were going to be doing online learning with them. 981 student devices as of, and that's as of a few days ago. So the number climbs up a few more every day. Even now, we still have additional requests coming in, and we're trying to meet them. But 981 devices have been given out to students, and that's been students who've come to school to pick them up, as well as some amazing staff going out to deliver devices to students as well. We've done the best we can, and we've met, at this point, we've met every request that has been made for a device. But in order to do that, there's been a very big shift in focus for the IT Department. Our systems are very, very, were very, very clearly designed for things to work inside our house. So our security, our control of those devices, they weren't really designed to go home very, very easily, or very well, or to function very well outside of our environment. And that was very purposefully done for security and support reasons. Teams is a platform that I'm sure some of you have heard about. It wasn't used a lot within the district, and now Teams usage is soaring, and we've had to make some adjustments for that. Are the demand on our IT specialists, our integration specialists, has really just been through the roof. The learning curve for our teachers is high, but they're all taking it on. And that puts an incredible amount of pressure on our technology integration specialists. And in order to get those devices out there as quickly as we could, we've had to sacrifice some functionality of certain things. But we got those devices out there. We've got, we know where they are. Now we're starting to think about what we need to do to bring them back in. But you know, we've, we've gotten those devices to kids. And then the question then becomes, are they, are they being used? And how much are they being used? And as you can see, some of the statistics are a little bit misleading. In the top right-hand corner, you see this wonderful stat that shows that we have 2,739 students have logged in to ClassLink. Now, we have 2,779 students. So that means 99% of our students have logged in in the month of April. And, and that statistic is, is an accurate statistic. But that's a month-long statistic. That doesn't mean all of our students are logging in every single day. If you look a little bit more closely at the, at the numbers, you can see it's at about 40%, or 45% per day that are actually checking online on their work. Now, that doesn't mean they're not working every day. I don't know what their teachers have been assigning them. They may only need to check in every other day. But we can see from the statistics that our students are all able to get in, or mostly able to get in, and that they are checking in at least periodically. I talked a little bit about Teams usage going through the roof. In the last 30 days, we have had 2,000 Teams meetings take place within the district. Some of those are one-on-one meetings between staff, faculty, or faculty and students, but a lot of those are classes as well. So it's 2,000. Whole lot of usage. Pretty impressive. That presents us as an IT Department with some challenges, and from an instructional perspective, with a lot of challenges. Internet at home has been a challenge for some of us, some of our students, and some of our teachers. We're exploring different possibilities with it, but not everyone has the access that they need to be able to do this effectively. Supporting the users at home has been a bit of a challenge for us. Our help systems and the way we do things, we're not designed that way. Our phones are in-house, and our network systems and our controls for those are on campus. And as I said before, a lot of our systems were not designed to keep things under control and under support and under security things outside of our, our realm. Our realm obviously has expanded now. That increased need to support our teachers' learning curves and transitioning from the way they were doing things to a new way is a big challenge for us, and we're working hard to meet it. The device numbers, I said, we've been able to meet every, every request. The challenge in that is that we have very, very few spares, and not every student at an individual grade level, or even in an individual class, is using the same device. And that makes support extremely difficult. It makes consistency extremely different, difficult. And it makes ensuring equity very, very difficult. If one student is doing his work on, you know, on his phone, and another student is using a laptop with a high-speed connection, there's some inequity there in terms of what their capabilities are. So that's, that's a big challenge for us to try and overcome as well. And of course, as I've said, our, our network and our systems, really, were designed to keep things internal. But we've, you know, through whatever we could do to make everything work externally, we've done. And we've, we've had to do a lot of interesting things to make that happen. What should we be planning to make that more effective going forward? You know, we know there's a chance we could be doing this again. We really should be prepared for it. And there's going to be a shift in the way, in the way our teachers teach and our students learn, as we learn more and more about how we can take advantage of our technology. In order to do that, we really should be looking at how to make our systems more cloud-based, and make our network services much more cloud-based, so that we can deploy software, we can support our devices when they're not on campus, give our students new software, give updates, ensure security when things are outside our network, ensure that our filters are just as robust as they are off-campus, as when they're on campus, and that our, our reporting tools work just as well. And in order to do all of that, we really should be looking at, you know, we should be looking at one-to-one implementation at the high school, where we know what devices our students have, and that all of our students have access to the technology that's going to enable them, particularly at the high school, possibly even, you know, at, at our youngest levels. Right now, we are not a full one-to-one school district. And in order for us to really be prepared for this type of learning, I believe we need to be. We also need to work with our, with our staff a bit in terms of professional development. We need to learn to use Schoology more effectively. We need to learn to use Teams more effectively at our younger levels. It's going to be Seesaw. And, and the software that we currently have, we can take advantage of a little bit better. We still do need to make sure that even if devices are not here, things are still compliant with EdLaw 2D. The state has been very clear that none of this trumps the regulations that are put in place for education law 2D. So we have to make sure we're compliant with all of those things. In order to do, yes.
Sorry, could you just, for, for Board members who may not know what, what EdLaw 2D complacency is, it is for the safety, security, and confidentiality components of things as well. So that's really where the key is for what's coming down. Am I correct, Sandy?
Yeah, it is. It's, it's the, it's the federal law that tells us we need to protect our student information, that all personally identifiable information that can link back to a student is protected. And we're not, we're not allowing the software companies that we work with to use that data on our students, to sell it to marketing companies, or all of those kinds of things. And we're not using it to, in any way, invade the privacy of our students' educational data. So not just us internally, but all of the companies that we work with have to be compliant with that. And we have to ensure that that happens. And I believe in today's agenda, there's actually a Data Protection Officer position that is required now by New York State, or will be as of July 1, be required for every school district to have. I believe that's on our agenda for today as well. And that's the person who will be in charge of making sure that we stay compliant with education law 2D. If you hear about Part 121 of the state regulations, that's New York State's response to the federal ed law 2D. Just, just for that whole alphabet soup thing, if you hear 121 referred to.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So what do we need to make all of that happen? Well, the high school needs, needs more equipment. We don't have a laptop for every student at the high school. We're short by about half. So we, I looked at the numbers this past week, and we need about 490 additional laptops. And that includes some, some equipment for staff as well. The number of staff that took devices home to work with, and to be able to work effectively from home, was a little more than we expected. Not that we weren't able to handle it right now, but if, if we want every teacher and every student to be able to work at that same level, we're going to have to consider providing that equipment. We also need to look at some consulting services to move the way we authenticate who you are and what services you get. We use a system called Windows Active Directory inside our network to allow all of that. We need to shift that to a cloud-based authentication method, also by Microsoft, that allows for Windows updates and software called Azure. And, and we're going to need a little bit of help to do that. We've, our Active Directory system has been here a long time. We're very, very well-versed in how it works. But it's put together very, very tightly for internal security. And we need to look at how we can move that to a more cloud-based environment, so that the devices that we do have for our, our staff, faculty, and students are more mobile. And again, I've said a couple of times, we're going to need to implement some more professional development in those online learning tools and strategies in order, in order to do this really well. That's what we're gonna need.
Okay.
And we're gonna need to use Zoom, because you can, you can see our teachers are using it, like I said, over 2,000 Zoom meetings in the last month for our students. And let me, let me figure out how I can stop sharing that now.
Thank you. Mrs. Sharoff, I'm so glad you took us onto that screen, because I couldn't see you. So I see you have a question. Go ahead.
Thank, thank you. Sandy, is there any grant money out there that might help the district acquire the laptop devices that we need that could help us out?
So one of the things that I'm currently looking at, under the CARES package, there is going to be some money for education from the federal government. We have no idea yet how that's going to be implemented. I'm, I'm already signed up to attend some webinars on that, but we're really not sure yet how any of that's going to work. And that's, that's the only thing that I've seen so far in terms of grants.
Thank you. And one more thing, if you don't mind, the larger question of broadband accessibility out there, the gaps in internet availability in our district persist, even if we do our best to get devices out there, even help families to try to mitigate the cost of, we, we still have the challenge of blind spots and gaps.
It is a challenge. And actually, right now, in the, over this past week or so, I've had the high school assistant principal and her team, as they've been going around and getting devices to people, and our school bus drivers, who have been delivering food all over our district, I've had them carrying devices that are tracking what the cellular signals are like in all of those locations. I don't have all of that data yet, but that data will help us determine whether or not hotspots could even help us bridge that gap. But we are investigating it. I'm just getting that data back right now. Also, as most of you know, Spectrum is, is pretty much in our area, the only wired internet access that you can get. And there are a couple of places within our district that regardless of, of whether or not you can pay for it, it's just not available, even if you want to pay for it. So that's a challenge as well. It's a challenge that, that Senator Metzger is even looking into at the moment, and trying to make some, to get, make some ground on.
Right. Thank you.
I actually spoke to that, and I'll speak, when we do roundtable today at the Town Hall meeting for the county, I was asked to speak with regard to how things are going with the different hats that I wear. And so broadband did come up. But one of the things I do want to make sure that people understand is, we are preparing for if we wind up in this situation, and there's an issue with regard to this, we are looking for this with, with regard to if we have to utilize this online learning for longer than we would like. But the bottom line is, make no mistake, Sandy is not saying that this is a replacement for teachers in front of a classroom.
No way.
He is not saying that. I just want to clarify that, because there's so much misunderstanding out there. The bottom line is, is nothing can replace those interconnectivities, the emotional social wellness of our students, to be able to make those connections, et cetera. This is a tool. Technology has always been and continues to be a tool for our students to learn. And so I just want to make clear that Sandy is doing the presentation to give us an update where we are in the middle of this pandemic. But he is not at all advocating this is the way learning should be taking place on a full-time basis. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Absolutely. And thank you, Lori. Yes, my background is as an educator as well, and nothing replaces that, those students being in a classroom with their teacher. The technology, again, is a tool. It's something that enables us to do things together, but, but nothing replaces that experience of being in a room with your students.
Absolutely. Any other questions for Sandy? Terrific. Thank you, Sandy. Wait, Mr. Groden.
I just wanted to say thank you for all your work in helping mobilize and get the students on track and keeping them on track. And your efforts are really truly appreciated.
Thank you very much, Todd. Again, I have a great team to work with, and, and it's good to hear. But you know, where the, the challenge is great, but, but it's a challenge, and that's what we do, because we love what we do.
Any other questions around the table? Okay, terrific. Thank you very much. We very much appreciate your help. There, for those of you who did not get the text message from Janet, there was an update to our agenda, which we had to refresh to see. So if you would be so kind, if you have not refreshed your agenda in Board Docs, please make sure you do so. We're just going to move, Lisa, if you, if you don't mind, we're going to make you actually D3. And we're going to move next to Linda Olermark's in her presentation, and then we'll go back and pick up the budget presentation.
Terrific. Thank you. I'm just trying to get my screen to share now. So just bear with me. Sorry. Oh my gosh. So I would like to talk a little bit about, I'm sorry, I'm still trying to get my screen to share. Talk a little bit about the ELA programming for K through 2. As you know, we've been in discussion about moving away from Super Kids for some time. I'm sorry, I'm still struggling with, oh, here we go. Apologies. Okay. Everybody see that?
It's loading.
Okay. All right. So as we have talked about previously, we have been investigating early literacy programs. And just to quickly review what makes a good early literacy program, we want a print, print-rich environment. We want many opportunities to engage as readers and writers for our students. We want authentic experiences using play, music, and art for early learning and language development. We want that to be integrated in daily activities, and we want to deliberately build vocabulary and knowledge. The components of a strong K2 literacy program are basically decoding and comprehension. And within decoding, we have sounds, orthographic and visual skills, morphology, writing, fluency, and incomprehension. We have vocabulary and content knowledge development, and frequent opportunities to engage deeply in text. We have vocabulary and content knowledge development and frequent opportunities to engage deeply in text. So, you know, I've had a few questions about why I change now. I can tell you that I have had multiple meetings with our K two teachers since we have closed, before we closed, closed our buildings, not closed, obviously. And our K two teachers really feel that super kids moves too quickly for our students. It's too prescribed as a script. It's too paper-based, particularly for our youngest students who need much more hands-on experiences and it's not grounded in authentic literacy experiences. As many of you know, we have been engaged with the Hudson Valley Writing Project with training and support for early childhood educators over the past year and a half. And the, the work really has been in creating integrated and literacy-rich environments. In our current system, we have a difficult transition from second to third grade. And the feedback that I have gotten from teachers, K two teachers, is that the school building closures have really highlighted the challenges our students face with our current K two ELA programming. And that the teachers are very committed to moving ahead to find another solution. So our recommendation is open court reading. It's well-rated by the Institute of Education Sciences and What Works Clearinghouse. It's systematic explicit instruction in phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary and comprehension. Teachers have the ability to create integrated language-rich environments using phonics-based curriculum. It's not a script. The one non-negotiable for us would be the phonemic awareness and phonics-based script. But that we're looking to scaffold our teachers. So those teachers that are true literacy experts could, could stick with the non-negotiable pieces, but be able to bring to their practice all of those other really rich experiences that can build content knowledge and vocabulary. And, and, and teachers have a choice in terms of how many components that they would, they would, they would use based on their particular level of expertise. So I, I wanted to bring that to you because I think that now is the time, if we're going to make a decision about next year, this is the recommendation from the K two teachers that we, that we move ahead, particularly because they, they see the deficits the current program has, meeting the needs of our children. So any questions?
Any questions from anybody? Mr. Crumley?
Is this a different program by the same name? Or is this the same program that I would be familiar with from when I was going through elementary school?
You are correct. It is the same program. It's been updated, obviously with the change in our understanding of the science of learning to read, but it's the same program.
And does it still have a complimentary program? I believe it was Distar when I was going through school, or is it kind of more all-inclusive nowadays?
It's more inclusive.
Thank you.
Other questions? I think Ms. Holmes, did you have your hands raised? Your hand raised?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, so on the recommendations page. Sorry, hold on a minute.
That's okay.
Okay, so, um, you said it provides systematic explicit instruction in phonics awareness, blah, 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 blah. And then it also says it's not a script. Those sound like they conflict and I'm confused.
Right. So when you talk about a systematic phonics instruction, there's a progression, right? So you think about how you introduce particular sounds, right? That, so those are the, the phonemic awareness that leads to the, to the understanding of how sounds are connected to letters. And so there's a progression that we go through and a pacing, right, of how that gets introduced, particularly in the cave, in the, in the kindergarten years. And so that there's consistency in, in when and how kids are introduced to that. How kids engage with language overall is not scripted. In our current program, all of those components are, have, have a pacing guide, but also these are the materials that you use and this is the way that you use the materials. The only component of this program that we would have as a non-negotiable is this, the sense that the the sounds and the letters are introduced in a particular order at a particular pacing guide, but that the experiences that happen around the introduction of those of, of the sounds and letters are much more responsive to the students in the room and that are more deliberate in building content knowledge and vocabulary.
Okay, so it sounds like it's very flexible. If there's a new teacher who doesn't, is not particularly strong in literature, they can really lean on the program. If there's an experienced teacher who's an expert in whatever they can kind of use, do, right? Whatever's best for the students.
That is correct, yeah.
So what is the plan going forward to get all of our teachers up to doing the best practices instead of just following this program?
Sure. Thank you. That's a great question. So the model with Hudson Valley Writing Project, just like any writing project, it's a national organization, is the idea that you, that, the, the support and the training that happens actually comes from teachers. So there's not outside people or administrators or other people that are sharing their expertise, right? That we're building the capacity of our teachers through other teachers. So in the past, we have been working with two early childhood educators, one from Waukegan and one from New Paltz. And that the first cohort of teachers that we worked with has the capacity now to begin to be working with other teachers. So that the idea, right, is that we continue to build that capacity with, with all of our teachers, using our teachers and their expertise to, to continue that work.
I mean, is there is there like, like a timeline or like, say, a new teacher comes on, you know, how, how long does it take for them to be good? I mean, nobody wants their first grader to go to the, you know, mediocre new teacher because they haven't learned everything.
Sure. So in there, actually, we had some first-year teachers in our cohort last year who was, who were doing that work. So that, you know, the, the timeline really, you know, all of our teachers get a mentor teacher, all of our teachers work within in supporting each other. And so they're very collaborative in those, in those grade-level teams. And so, you know, I don't know that I could definitively say that every teacher would be, you know, an expert in X amount of time. But I do know that our K one, two teachers are highly motivated and and, and really, this is a, an approach that they are behind a hundred and ten percent. And they really want to embrace it and, and improve practice and build capacity overall, so.
That, that's great to hear. They're working together because everybody has strengths and weaknesses and they can all kind of, you know, work on things together. I have another question.
Sure.
Um, so we're gonna appoint a new Cook principal tonight. Has she had any input? I mean, I know she's not a, an employee yet, but like, you know what I mean? Because she has a lot of background in literacy.
Yeah, yeah. And I, you know, we definitely, like I said, she, yeah, just being appointed tonight, I could definitely have that conversation with her. You know, I think that the challenge for me, right, is that when, when teachers are behind something a hundred and ten percent, it's important to me to really respect that because they're the ones that are doing the work. But, but I totally concur that, that once our cook principal is appointed, that that is a conversation that we need to have.
And Jen, one of the things, you know, where, where you said with regard to the reading, this would be true of any first-year teacher in any department across the board. When they come into a district, this, the curriculum is set by the school board based upon what it is we're getting from our central administration leadership. So we're setting this new curriculum moving forward. And whoever comes in would have to either embrace it, adopt it, or if it's not working for them, they're gonna, they're not gonna, this is not going to be the fit for them. Most of them will have done their homework with regard to what, what it is that there is. But I've had people who have walked into districts that I've worked in and, you know, that I was in Linda's role in another district quasi sort of with regard to curriculum. And they would walk in and I would say to them, okay, now you're hired, here's our curriculum. And they would say, but wait a minute, I don't teach Delcro's, I teach, you know, Suzuki or whatever the, and we would say, well, in this district, this is what we use. These are the, these are the, the programs that we use so that our students are always speaking the same language. So I don't, I don't want it to be that, I don't want it to be for anybody who might be listening to this, hearing the words of a mediocre teacher. We're not going to hire mediocre teachers. We're gonna hire the best and the brightest. And then we're going to make sure that they have the support, the supports in place for them to be able to deliver the curriculum at its highest level.
Right. And they've just graduated from college and are in learning, teaching children to read. I'm not saying mediocre, but it's important to share the knowledge, that sharing of knowledge is the important part for me.
Right. I just wanted to clarify so that people who are listening aren't thinking that way. So Linda, are you in agreement with?
Yeah, definitely. And I think that, you know, it, it is that collaboration, right? It is that it's not some outside consultant coming in and saying, okay, I'm going to show you how to use this program and then you're going to get good at it and you're going to follow the script. It's our teachers being invested in exploring and learning, continuously learning, right? The, the practices that, that help take, engage kids in those literacy-rich environments. And they're so, there's so much expertise already within the district. And so it's kind of harnessing that and allowing them to, to, to collaborate with each other.
Thank you, Linda. Mr. Sheriff?
I just, that, I know that we do our best to hire the best and brightest candidates we have. And there's, there's nothing that replaces the enthusiasm of teacher buy-in. And, and it, it's immeasurable. And the best people to teach teachers about our students is other teachers who've been working with our students. So kudos and it's a great way to go and it's a delight to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Olermark's? Okay, thank you so much for your presentation. And then now moving to Ms. Stella. Excuse me, moving to Mrs. Stella with regard to the budget presentation. I do want to remind anybody who's listening because we do not have the ability for you to communicate with us during questions and things of that nature. So while we're setting up with regard to the budget presentation, please be aware of the fact that if you do have questions, we will certainly answer them across the board with anything. And all we ask is, is that you send an email to our clerk, who is Janet Montez. And her email address is J Montez, J M O N T E S at K twelve M C S D dot net. So I just wanted to remind people and Janet would love to hear from you if you have a question. So this is Stella.
So Janet, can you share the PowerPoint on your screen? I'm not connected. Okay, everybody can see. Perfect.
Yep.
Um, so I wanted to talk to the board a little bit about the developments with regard to the budget vote and things to discuss and think about over the next week and a half. Last week, we were all anxiously awaiting information on, you know, state aid cuts and is it really going to be twenty percent? And how's it going to be distributed and hopeful that we would have had some more information this week or at the latest, next week. And late Friday, there was a email that the governor signed an executive order regarding the budget vote. So I put together this PowerPoint for things to understand about the executive order and what it might mean for our budget. So the budget vote date is now June ninth. All votes will be by absentee ballot, prepaid return postage. So we have to send that and it's not by request. Usually you have to request an absentee ballot. Now we have to send to every registered voter. So that's about thirteen thousand ballots that we will be sending out. We talked to our attorneys and they gave us the green light to do a business reply form on the return ballot. So we only pay for the ones that actually get sent back. So hopefully that'll save us a little bit of money. But because of all of this unknown and we're living in this crazy, crazy world of every time you turn around, something else is going on. I'm not really sure what this means. You know, we know voter turnout historically has not been thirteen thousand people. Um, so is that a positive or negative for us? So if it is a negative and the budget does go down, heaven forbid, um, there's nothing in the executive order that talks about a budget revoke date. And there probably isn't enough time to turn it around based on the statute of how much time has to pass between your first vote and your second vote. So most likely, a defeated budget would result in a contingent budget. Contingent budgets have changed over the years, so I wanted to talk about what that means. I mean, there's a lot of misconceptions out there about, you know, sports goes away or this goes away. And that's not what happens in a contingent budget. The first thing is your tax levy does not increase over what it was in the current year. It's the lesser budget tax levy of the current year or your previous defeated budget. Your administrative portion of the budget, the budget is broken into three parts. Your administrative portion cannot be a higher percentage than the current year's administrative portion. Most equipment purchases have been eliminated, including any bus purchases. And for us, we reduced our bus purchases in nineteen twenty. So it would put us way behind on our bus replacement schedule. There is no public use of any district facility. So that can be an issue. And state aid reductions are still likely for twenty twenty-one and possibly into twenty-one, twenty-two. So what else can we do and think about? For state aid reductions, we can consider appropriating reserves to offset those state aid reductions. And if we end up with additional fund balance, we can always re-appropriate money to those reserves. The reserves on timing about our unemployment reserve, our workers' compensation reserve and our reserve for employees' retirement. So I wanted to talk a little bit about a contingent budget and what makes up a contingent budget. The Board of Education legally has the responsibility to determine ordinary contingent expenses. It's the, let's see, Ed Law places a cap on the tax levy, like I said, and the administrative portion. I talked about that. The formal opinion from the council is from nineteen sixty-seven. They have amended that law over the last few years. So the contingent items are into three categories, legal expenditures, expenditures specifically authorized by statute and other items necessary to maintain the educational program, preserve property, ensure health and safety of students and staff. So years ago, like I said, people felt that, you know, contingent budget, you get rid of your sports, you can't do transportation. That's not true any longer. So generally, what comes out of the budget is the purchase of any and all the equipment, whether it's purchased, leased or least purchased. Budgetary subsidies to food services. We do not subsidize our food service program, so that does not apply to us. The other thing is pupil supplies readily available from other sources. So if a voter, if the voters fail to approve a budget that provides pens, pencils, paper for our students, we cannot buy those items. We can only buy teacher supplies. So the school has to determine what's a teacher supply as opposed to a pupil supply. I'm going to ask the board to adopt a budget on May tenth, so that we can meet the deadline set in the new governor's order. The last day to adopt a budget is May twenty-first. So our next meeting puts us right in the window to adopt a budget. I put the number that we talked about at the last meeting. That could change over the next week, once we find more information on state aid. I probably will propose to amend the revenue budget to appropriate some reserves. I would also ask the board to probably hold off on certain purchases that are included in the budget until after the December thirty-first lookback period for state aid reductions. By then, we should have a good idea of how bad it might be for twenty-one, twenty-two. And then we can build the budget going forward for twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, the tax cap The tax cap and the tax levy, it would be my recommendation that we levy to the cap this year. Just because last several years, our cap has been very low. Right now, the levy is just a little bit higher than it was in 2014, 15. So we've really held the tax levy lower than what people were paying five, six years ago. And then if the budget is defeated on June 9th, then the board should adopt a contingent budget on June 25th. The other portion of the, the executive order is about the budget hearing. There was a lot of confusion around that. The first thing came out that the budget hearing is adjourned. And so we were confused as to do we have to have one? And then we got other opinions and there was a lot of back and forth. Poor Janet and I were running around this week a little crazy. Finally got the, um, information from our attorneys and NISBA and ASBO that we must hold a budget hearing between May 26th and June 2nd is what the governor's order said. But the governor issued an order previously that allows you to do budget hearings and public meetings remotely or virtually, and that expires June 1st. So all of these organizations feel that you have to have your budget hearing between May 26th and June 1st if you want to do it virtually. So June 2nd, I just, I'm taking off the table. I would recommend that we do it on May 28th, which is Thursday, which would be like a normal board meeting night. We need to set that date tonight. Uh, our legal notice has to go into the paper no later than Tuesday, so we have to get it to the paper tomorrow. And everything just kind of collapsed into a, you know, three or four day period. So, um, that's all I really wanted to talk to the board about. And I'm sure I will have much more information for May 19th.
So, uh, first question, Linda, uh, could we make the budget hearing at like 6 o'clock, 5 o'clock? Like, we don't need to do it at a regular board meeting time in the evening. Board members, how do you feel about? The thought of that?
That's fine.
Good, so 6, 6 is a good time? Linda, is that good for you? Dr. Silver, is that good for you? You want to move over here?
It can make sense.
Okay, so we'll do a 6 o'clock budget hearing and, you know, Linda, uh, or Linda, Lisa, that L L thing. Uh, so Miss Stella, you'll have the ability to, um, make sure that Janet can get out the notice in a timely fashion that way.
Yeah, we also are talking to Sandy about some options for the public's participation. Creating an email address that we'll post on the website and in the legal notice that they can submit questions during the budget hearing and Janet can read them off and we can answer them at that time. If we don't have the answer, we can, you know, post a Q and A or something after the fact. So we're looking into all different kinds of options.
Yeah, and again, I do want to remind anybody who might be listening because we found out that there are more people actually showing up to our board meetings virtually. So, uh, we're looking at a zero to a below zero flat line with regard to what we're proposing to the community. It does affect what happens to us in the 2% formula for a number of years after. A contingency would definitely affect what happens beyond that. Every single person that you're looking at on this screen is a taxpayer. We get it. We understand it. But I will say what I said earlier today on the town hall. I will repeat it. We're going to have a lost generation because of this hit. There's no doubt about it. And someone paid for our education and it's our time to pay it forward. We're not asking for more. We're asking for what the needs are. So we hope that people actually do their homework and understand what's been going on. Ms. Jersey?
Um, Lisa, has the governor gave us anything as far as the, the reduction?
Not yet. The only thing they've, they've talked about is up to 20%. But we don't know if that's 20% for everybody, um, every district in the state. Wealthier districts, obviously, that's not a big deal for them because they don't rely as heavily on state aid as some of the poorer districts, so it really devastates others. They did the same thing many years ago. Was it 2008? Gap elimination adjustment and, um, poorer districts suffered a lot. And I'm hopeful that they learned something from that. And, um, you know, they, they allocate this pandemic adjustment according to, um, wealth as opposed to, you know,
Just didn't give any indication of anticipated date of any further information coming out?
So the first look back period was April 30th and they said it would take them probably until May 15th to get an idea of whether or not expenditures exceeded 101% of the budget and if revenue was less than 99% of projections. So odds are, um, they've spent a lot more money than they planned and they didn't get any tax revenue because they postponed that date. So I anticipate they're going to do something unless the federal government in the next couple of days comes out and says that they're going to give money to the states.
Yeah, I mean, they're all, we're, we're hearing May 15th is the date we're going to hear something about, that cuts. There, there are just more unknowns now than there even was back in, in the Great Recession in '08 or '09 and '09, '10. So could, aren't there the three look back periods? The April 30th, the June 30th, and then the December 31st. So we could get hit three different times with either reductions or increases in state aid. The second thing is, as Lisa mentioned, in '08, '09, the reduction was across the board evenly. And so that, that disproportionately hurt districts that relied on, that were higher needs districts that relied on state aid. When the state figured that out, when they did the gap elimination adjustment, they gave the money back first to the, to the higher needs district, districts, and last to low needs, needs districts. So if they figured anything out, they, they should take money away from, from the low need districts first. But unfortunately, where the real money is, it's with the higher needs districts. So, um, it's hard to know exactly how it plays out. The governor said that his, his, um, the 20% reduction, the approximate, would be, um, across all municipalities. So that's villages, towns, counties, and school districts. But we don't know whether there's 20% once, in subdivided categories, how that's going to be divided. So that's another piece. If it's 20% across the board, then what happens when you get down to the granular level of the individual municipality? So there's just, there's way too much to know, to, that we don't know along the way. And even what we think we know, say on May, May 19th, we may, unknown by June, by July 15th. And so this is just a, a very fluid, it's very, can be very difficult for us to go into this with any degree of confidence at all. Um, I think what, what Lisa has figured out is that, that we can, we have a, because of the, the reserves we have, we can buffer, um, uh, reductions in aid to, to a pretty good extent before really harming program. If we had to go to a contingent budget, that's a whole different story. And that's going to, that would, that would significantly impact things we need to do. So, um, we, we need to work to get the budget passed, whether it's our usual 800 voters or whether the 13,000 will have the opportunity right now.
Any other questions after that wonderful news? We still love you, Lisa, and we're very glad that you're there.
Thank you.
So, yes.
Lisa, I thought that, uh, when you were just talking, doing your presentation, did you say you recommended doing a, uh, 2% maxing out or whatever our tax cap is this year? Or are you recommending doing no?
No, I, I recommend if the tax cap formula allows us right now to levy 1.89%. And I'm recommending something a little lower than that, like 1.8, I think. Because of the last several years, our tax cap was 0.1% and 0.8%. We really have not increased taxes in the last several years. So I would recommend if the cap allows us to go to a certain level, that that's what we should do. It won't take a super majority, you know, to, um, pass. It preserves your levy going forward. If we reduce the levy below the cap, you are pretty much giving away that you'll never get it back. You, you're always going to be behind the eight ball. And if we go to a contingent budget and we're hit on the revenue side to a, you know, between state aid and lower tax cap and on the appropriation side, it could take years for us to get back programs that are wonderful here. You know, kids do great things and that my job is to make sure I can preserve as many of those as possible. So that's what I'm trying to balance with our reserves and fund balance to do the best I can for the students of this great district.
Okay, thanks. That sounds great.
Sydney, your response just now with that heart was perfect. And the bottom line is, is Sydney, we're going to be counting on you because you've got a lot of young votes there that we know are now registered. You know, we got to make sure that they're returning their ballots. We've got to make sure that people understand that this is about the kids. Uh, you know, hashtag, it's all about the kids. So.
Yeah, and they're behind them. Just with this pandemic, it's going to, I don't want to harm, harm them anymore than they already have been.
Yep. And we don't want, we don't want a hashtag lost generation. We want a hashtag, it's all about the kids.
Absolutely.
Yeah, NISC has produced, uh, I'll share with the board, um, offline, um, uh, the history of, of state recessions like this and position the states in, and then what happens. The board needs to anticipate three to four year budgetary issue with this. After 9/11, um, it took, um, from the first quarter, the third quarter in '01 to the, to the fourth quarter, you know, to the first quarter in '04 to recover. And that was a one and a half percent decrease in, in, in a, or GDP. In the Great Recession, there was a 10% loss. And it went from quarter one of '07 to quarter three of '09, two and a half years. And there into the anticipation of this one, it's going to go, um, potentially to quarter one of 23. So, um, there's, there's, this is going to be a long haul process.
So I did want to share something, you know, if you listen to what the governor said today and you listen into the question portion, uh, the person from the New York Times asked the question with regard to, um, an exodus, if you will, from the New York City metropolitan area into upstate New York of families because of this epidemic or this pandemic and what the concern is with, with regard to moving forward. You know, this board has several times put up a, a bond issue with regard to reopening a school building. And, and one of the things that we made very clear during that, that scenario was if an emergency ever happened, such as what happened in, in nine, you know, on 9/11. In, in 9/11, we had just moved into our new middle school with a, with just under 700 students. And by the end of that year, we were, we were overcrowded, well over 900, I think it was 936 students by the end of that year because people moved upstate. The, if the families move upstate, we're not going to have that generation of the dollar. And the assumption is that this is going to happen. It just, it is. We already know there are families that are doing it. If that bump occurs, we saw it during Hurricane Sandy. We saw bumps, uh, after, uh, everything that happened in Puerto Rico. This community has seen bumps in enrollment. That's why our enrollment has pretty much stayed flatline when you take a look at it. The bottom line is, is if, if those kids come up, we have to teach them. We have to provide them those computers. We have to do everything that we're doing for everyone else because they will then become citizens of this community. And we have to be very aware of that in moving forward. And we have to educate the public as to what it is we're looking for with regard to this budget and make sure that they understand it. We're school board members and we get training on this so that we understand it. And even at that, it can be a little confusing. And, you know, uh, we get great leadership that, that gives us the, the specifics. But we're going to have to get out there and we're going to have to hustle this because people are going to have to, and, and not hustle in a bad way, hustle it in the understanding of what this means. Because if we're going to have people wanting to move up to this area, they're going to want to come to the best schools. Just my two cents on the subject. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, then moving on, on the agenda, Mrs. Sheriff, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move to approve consent agenda items F1 to L2.
Second on that by Mr. Groden, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So ordered, uh, Dr. Silver, do you want, or do you want me to handle the congratulatory's?
Attend your teachers?
Yes.
You may do it if it pleases you, or I'd be happy to.
I'm, I'm sorry, you, you cut out there for a second.
Oh, if, if it pleases you, you can take, do, do the honors.
Okay, thank you. So tonight we have with us, um, many, uh, many, many, uh, people who just received tenure in our district. Uh, we want to congratulate each and every one of you. We welcome you to the Monticello family, uh, on a full-time basis. And we are so proud of the work that you have done. Uh, we congratulate you on your, on your tenure. It's not easy to receive tenure. You have to go through a lot. And we are very, very pleased with the work that you've been doing and we congratulate each and every one of you. Thank you for all your service. We look forward to a continued, long, healthy relationship with you. Congratulations. Moving on from there, board roundtable. So give me a second. I gotta scroll down on this computer some more. So board roundtable, anybody? Mr. Groden?
I want to say congratulations to our girls' basketball. Outstanding girls, Coach Jasper for being coach of the year. This is, uh, you made us very proud. We really appreciate you and what you do. And as far as people, um, counting for, you know, these, uh, our, our whole population, as it may get a bump, I would encourage everybody to fill out their census if they haven't already so that they actually do count. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else going around the room? Okay, I do have a few things to report. Um, I did participate in the RISE Walk. RISE is an incredible organization that comes in through our schools and provides services to many of our students and families. So I was honored to be able to be part of their virtual walk. Luckily, it was a nice day outside. My allergies didn't like it, but it was really a nice day outside. And it was, uh, I was glad to participate. I, uh, I had the opportunity, as many of you may or may not know, I serve as the New York State Representative to the Advocacy Leadership Force for the National Association for Music Education. I had the opportunity to sit in on a recent meeting of theirs with regard to what other states are doing, looking at the potential cuts and, and where things fall. It was very informative. And it was nice to hear from people across, across the country with regard to not only what's happening in the music, which is what it was really about, but to see what, what, what's going on in education nationally. We are all in the same boat and some worse than others, but definitely in the same boat. And again, we have to be worried about the kids. I did attend a hub meeting, uh, the, uh, the programs for St. John's Street Hub. The hub, uh, leadership is doing a, an incredible job with working along with our food service folks in getting more words out and making sure that people are aware and are being provided services that are needed. I do know that when we have leftover foods, Marty Calavito and Tom Baskett have, uh, been getting those items and helping to distribute them as well throughout our school community. So we thank them for their service. They've, they're also developing, um, what they're looking at as a potential reopening plan so that they continue, they can continue to serve as our students and families. Moving on from there, uh, Ness and Cultural Arts, I had the, uh, the joy of running a charades class last Friday night. Tomorrow, back by popular demand is the Build a Story component, which I'm really excited about. But I do know that many students in our district are also participating in a number of their programs. They're doing online teaching classes. They're doing a karaoke and they're doing all kinds of things. So it's great to have them as, as a outside agency that works along with us. And it's, it's great to have some of the programs for our students that are beyond the regular school day and, and a lot of their activities are also for family engagement. Both Stacy and I did attend the graduation committee meeting. More to come on that in the future, but as we have said in the past, we will be doing a graduation that the students will be proud and honored to be part of. And we congratulate each and every one of them in their process. This afternoon, as I had said earlier, I had the honor to represent education for our county town hall meeting. It is available on YouTube, so you can watch what the broadcast was. The two issues that I, that I spoke about was one was the broadband issue and the other one was the budget. And the concept of the budget and what school districts are looking at and, and the issues with regard to that. The financial impact of what COVID is going to do to all of us. I do want to make this very clear once again, a gazillion times over because there's been a lot of Facebook feedback since I was on and I want people to have, have clarity as to the situation. Schools are open. The physical space is what's closed and it's not fully closed. What I mean by that is our bus drivers are in daily, our secretaries are in, our central administration staff is in. Teachers are coming into the building on a regular basis. Our tech people are in. Our A's are in, our custodians are in, our buildings and grounds members are in. You go across the board, they are in our buildings. Add to that that you had to provide the safety that was not part of the norm in the past with regard to masks, hand sanitizer, wiping down every single counter multiple times. There are added expenses to every single school district inclusive of ours. No, it's not schools closed, use your money and put it over there. Schools did not close. We are closed. We are still operational. We are still going ahead. You heard tonight from, from Mr. Wagner very clearly that in order for us to even make do with what they're asking us to do, the cost involvement, the extra licensings so that we can have these meetings so that they are of a license where we can have confidentiality and things of that nature. The cost involvements to schools exponentially went up with the COVID virus. It did. That's just the facts. What we're going to do about it moving on is up to us. Do our kids matter? To me, they do. Just wanted to share that information. So please take a look at that when you get a chance. Mrs. Sheriff.
Hard to follow. However, I just want to quickly mention that the Sullivan County School Boards Association Annual Awards Dinner will be postponed till this fall.
Thank you. Anybody else around on Roundtable? Okay, going into the information from our principals, the reports from the principals, any questions around that? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, no correspondence outcomes, no policy, capital project update, Dr. Silver.
First of all, the next meeting on the 19th, ECG and Train will be here to present the EPC proposal after the board. Looking for approval for that at the June meeting. And then the good news is that we have a bid opening for the capital project yesterday and the estimates came in. It's funny, when did the estimates earlier, they were done looking at the, at the project in pieces, the high school project and the, and the garage project. When you looked at, when we looked at the bids yesterday, it was across both projects. So the numbers you have to get to the bottom line to match up. So the really good news is the, the low bidders, the parent low bidders came in at $26,200,000. The estimate back in January was $34,500,000. So we're 8.3 million below budget, which is great news. So what happens next is LeChase and, and CPL will be scoping the contracts with the apparent low bidders. And, but, but they'll come to the board with on the 19th is a set of awards for the bids and will be working on the contracts with our attorneys and their attorneys. But the board will actually be approving the award of the bids on the 19th and then we move forward. So it's, it is all good news on that front. The, so that's it for, for capital projects.
Thank you, Dr. Silver. That is great news coming in 8.3 below what we had anticipated. Knowing that the EPC is going to help us in saving money, we have definitely made sure that we are being fiscally responsible to our taxpayers. So this board has done its fiduciary responsibility, which is one of our major charges. So good job, guys. Moving on from there, upcoming events, obviously, we know that there ones that are there are for our information only and we're moving on from there. Community events, we're moving by superintendent report, Dr. Silver.
Thank you. A few things. First of all, buried in, in the consent agenda, the board appointed a new principal for Cook School for next year, Kamika Lockhart, who comes to us with experience as an assistant principal, an interim principal. She worked in Chicago for the bulk of her career. She was a staff developer and a kindergarten teacher for eight years. And she brings a wealth of experience to the district. We are thrilled to have her. She's a special candidate of 27 applications. I just want to welcome her into the district. I'll have information going out to the community tomorrow about more detailed information about, about her background. We hope to get her up here pretty soon to meet everybody. So congratulations to Kamika. The second thing is.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Lori acknowledged all the people that had tenure. Again, because people can't really, can't see the agenda with who they are, let me just read who got tenure. So their, their congratulations that way. And if I mispronounced your names, I apologize ahead of time. So 14 teachers and teacher assistants, Michelle Savariz, Caitlin Shack, Kenneth Montemoro, Clarissa Rivera, Catherine Sarpyer, Jen Gore, Paige Moore, Sandra Darnobid, Denise Lee Young, Anthony Berman, Jen Doherty, Maureen Garcia Morgan and Tyler Glaffensweller. So congratulations to all of you and wish you a long, successful career in Monticello.
Congratulations.
On other things, I assume board will receive by email from, from NISBA, the the 2020 board, or NISBA Resolution Kit for the NISBA Conference. Take a look at it if you're interested. If you have questions, feel free to ask. If you didn't get it, let me know and we'll forward it off to you. The second thing is Cook KLR, the, the, the transition to K235. The principal's been working hard with staff to get all the things done to be ready if the board chooses to move forward with that. I'll be sharing the information with the board over the next week about the preparations that have been made. At the May 19th meeting, I'll be asking you to make a decision about whether to move ahead or not with the transition. So that's just fair warning more than anything else. The other thing that's, that's hanging out there that we need to make a decision about, but our attorneys tell us it's not time yet, is there's a calendar, the calendar change. You all know we missed spring break. There's the, the 182 day school calendar that we buy to go all the way to June, to June 26th day, which is what was supposed to be the last day of school. We'll exceed the 182 days. So we have to move those five days of spring break and we have two snow days that we have to give back as well. We have to move them somewhere. My recommendation will be when, when the attorneys tell us it's time to do it, is that we move spring break to the last week of June, since there's no regents and move one of the snow days to the Friday before that, June 19th. So June 18th will be the last day of school. This is all, of course unofficial, so no, no one should count on it yet, but that's what I think makes the most sense. Moos is going to put the other unused snow day that we have to give back on the Tuesday after Memorial Day. That information will go out to the staff and community tomorrow. So we have a four day memorial weekend and people can plan on that. And we talked about standard reductions. I don't need to talk about that anymore. So I think, I think that's all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
Did, did we need to take action on the calendar tonight or are we going to do it at the next meeting?
Well, hopefully we'll do it at the next meeting because this, with all the executive orders, we know there's been confusion and conflicting information among them. And when I checked with the attorneys today, whether we, we, the board could make a change, they recommended waiting while they still try to get some clarity from the governor's office about what, what it meant. Because what's, what's at risk here is the, is the 180 day waiver and the loss of state aids. We need to be in compliance with whatever the, whatever state ed and the governor wants. So we don't lose some of the days that we get taken off before the first governor's closing of the school.
Any other questions? Okay, and would you please just convey a thank you to Ms. Taylor for sending us that updated information for us? That's what we were looking for and it was very informative. Thank you.
I love, thank you.
I would like to point out in public content, the, what was added, which was the note from a parent. Because again, I think it's important for people to hear. I've heard this from many, but this was sent to, actually to our clerk who had this put up. And what it says is, I have to tell you, I know a lot of people that teach in different districts and Monticello has been the most helpful for students from what I am seeing and hearing. I just really wanted to say thank you to all of you. You all have children of your own to teach too. And, and I get that makes for a more stressful time right now, but you all keep going with a little heart after, after it. So. And it was responded to with a, you're very welcome. Thank you so much. You have no idea how much that means to everybody. So congratulations to anybody who's listening with regard to getting that note that speaks volumes of what it is we're doing because hashtag, it is all about the kids.
Lori, you muted yourself.
Moving past that, I'm trying to run two, two computers at the same time. Moving past that, we're moving on to the Assistant Superintendent for Business update. Isella?
Okay, so I'm asking the board to approve participation in the DCMO BOSI's Cooperative Purchasing Coser for next school year. We save quite a bit of money even over a New York State contract by using that service. And yesterday I got an email and I'll share that with the board at the next meeting on how much we did save. And approval of a national weather forecasting contract. That's a service that our transportation department uses when, when we actually have winter. I don't know if we'll have winter ever again, maybe in May, but it's a service we've used for many years. I'm asking the board to approve that tonight as well.
Any questions of Ms. Taylor? Okay, moving on from there, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Olamarks.
Again, I would like to share my screen. We are starting a new feature. In particular, we are very interested in highlighting the work that our teachers are doing because it's kind of amazing. So we're calling, let me just get this, sorry, we're calling this Faces on Fire. We had asked principals and directors to start to highlight some of the faculty and staff members that are just, you know, I mean, everybody's doing phenomenal work, but we want to make some of that more public. Particularly, teaching is always kind of an invisible profession. I think it's even worse now for teachers. They, they're in isolation. As I mentioned earlier, I think the, the, the teachers in this district are highly collaborative and I know that they have been spending a lot of time with each other, sometimes daily, in planning and supporting each other. And so I had reached out to the initial group of teachers that had been offered up to me and one of the teachers, they were all very humble. They all said, oh, not me. Everybody else is doing so much more. And one of the teachers said, well, we're all teaching like our faces are on fire. So that's where we got our title from. And it's going to be on the website and we're going to do updates every week. But just so you know, as I scroll through it, just a little introduction and then we have some highlights of what some of our faculty and staff are doing in this online environment. We're probably going to do about five or six. I want to thank Courtney. She did a tremendous job in, in, in doing this. But I really encourage everybody to take an opportunity to, to look at this more closely. Like I said, our, our teachers are, I can't say enough good things about them. Really going above and beyond to get communication with families and with students and supporting them and being flexible in, in this time. And just as a little aside to note that kind of time, there are a couple of videos that are here at the end of this from two of our teachers in the high school. And they were talking to me to, this week about the amount of time that it takes to provide, to, to create these instructional videos. And it's, as they walk me through the whole process, it's about an hour to every minute of video that's produced. So it's an hour of, of planning and visualizing and doing the work and then editing and then getting it posted in all the proper places. So it's, it's a tremendous heavy lift and our teachers have hit the ground running and I just can't say enough positive things about that.
Thank you so much. Any questions around that?
So we'll have updates. I have a whole, a whole waiting list of people that'll be in the next, in the next issue of this. And we're looking to, there's about every week or 10 days, we'll update this and have more teachers highlighted.
And so appropriate that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. And to make sure that we give that special shout out to each and every one of our teachers. And in this particular case, we mean everybody who's an educator because we are all educators now in this process. And we are so blessed with the amazing job that is being done for our students.
Definitely. And I would also like to just highlight the related service personnel. So our related service folks, the folks who, in face to face instruction, right, do occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech, social work and therapy, they continue to provide related services. They are incredibly flexible group of individuals. And when you look at, with people personnel services, we track how, how often they're able to, to meet with students and families. And they're constantly shifting the, the method and mode that they're providing those services to students based on family need. So they could go through any of the video platforms that we have available with kids on the phone, email. So constant communication. Some of our related service providers are up to 99% participation in those services. So. But just a big shout out to them too.
We thank them, every single one of them for what they're doing. Sydney said it earlier in the meeting. She thanked everybody and the note says it. You are appreciated and, you know, we just, we can't say enough good about what, what it is that's going on in our district. And to know that we are being looked at as a district that is the shining star in this process. So we appreciate that.
Definitely.
And it comes from our leadership as well. So we thank those of you in those leadership positions that make that, those things happen. Any other questions or anything for Dr. Olamarks? Okay, so moving on from there, Ms. Sheriff.
Thank you. I would like to move that we take action items T1 to U8 as a group.
Do I have a second? Mr. Groden seconds it. Any discussion? Mr. Groden seconds it, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, Ms. Montez?
All right, you have to do U six as a roll call vote.
Thank you. So I'd like to amend my original motion. I'd like to move that we take items T one to U five and U seven and U eight as a group.
Second to that, Mr. Groden, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So ordered, Ms. Sheriff?
I move that we approve action items T one to U five and U seven and U eight.
And second to that, Ms. Holmes, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So ordered, Ms. Sheriff?
I move we approve action item U six as a roll call vote.
Second to that. Ms. Van Etten, any discussion? Ms. Montez, would you please call the roll?
Timothy Crumley?
Aye.
Wendy Galligan?
Aye.
Todd Groden?
Yes.
Jennifer Holmes?
Aye.
Helen Jersey?
Aye.
Lori Orsano James?
Aye.
A.C. Sheriff?
Aye.
Alex Van En. Can you hear me? Now I can, yep. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Moving on from there, V one correspondence, Janet has been putting in all of the information. There's tons of stuff there for public content with regard to things that are going, plus the other stuff that we've shared during the meeting, so we appreciate that. Any questions around that? I know it was a longer meeting than usual, but we had to hear about the budget and things of that nature, so we appreciate the time and effort on behalf of the board members. With that said, before we sign off, we just want to make make sure that we send the message out to everybody who's listening, we're here for you, we're going to make, we're going to get through this together and Monty pride forever, Monty proud, Panther pride, all of that stuff. So Sydney will just give us a little heart to close this out and I'll entertain a moment, a motion to adjourn made by Mr. Groden, seconded by Mr. Crumley, any discussion? Usually there's not, so good night, everybody, we thank you, stay safe.
Good night, all.
Good night, everybody.
Be well.